I opened up my computer for a Zoom call. And the old one has hinges here and parts started falling out of one of the hinges. And I had to get, I had to get books behind it to prop the thing up. So I put the camera on it. And since I go when I, my consulting is doing presentations, so I just said, ah, I think we're gonna...
You got the best out of it you could.
My wife said, I need a new one, too. What the heck? So Kirk Enterprises, two computers. We're gonna go. Good evening, I'm calling the Monday, December 13th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting to order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right. First item on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have any requests for changes to the agenda? Entertaining motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I move to approve the agenda for Monday, December 13th, 2021, Planning Commission of Eden Prairie.
All right, a motion from Commissioner De Sanctus to have a second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Higgins, all those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Moving on, the minutes from the meeting held Monday, November 8th, 2021. Any requests for edits or concerns about the minutes? Commissioner Mehdi.
We got a couple here.
Commissioner Mehdi.
I'll go. I believe it's page nine, towards the bottom, where it recalled the vote on the, I think it was the LE project. It said, motion carried eight to zero with one nay vote. It should be eight to one with one nay vote.
Yeah. Noted. And...
That was the same one.
Same one, okay. Any other concerns? All right. Entertaining motion to approve the minutes as agenda for that meeting. So moved. All right. Motion from Commissioner Kirk, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Taylor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes carry. We have two public hearings this evening. The first one's for Norson Eden Prairie Office. This is a request for a guide plan change from regional commercial to office on 1.66 acres. Planned unit development concept review on 1.66 acres. Planned unit development district review with waivers on 1.66 acres. Site plan review on 1.66 acres. Will a proponent of the project please come forward? Good evening. If you would, state your name and spell for the record and tell us what your project, please.
Jesse Hopkins, I'm a project architect at Norson. First name Jesse, J.E.S.S.E., last name Hopkins, H.O.P.K.I.N.S.
Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate your time tonight. I'm a project architect at Norson, Director of Commercial Architecture and a 20-year employee of the company. I'm joined by our civil engineer tonight, Brad Wilkerson, Westwood Professional Services, and our owner and CEO, Andy Anderson. Happy to be able to present this project to you. We take great pride in all of our projects as architects and builders, but none more than what will soon be our new corporate home in Eden Prairie. This project, do I have a slideshow to refer to? Okay. This project is located at 7544 Marketplace Drive, north of the I-94 Highway 212 interchange. Subject site has been previously developed as an at-grade parking lot, improved with asphalt paving, curb and gutter and site lighting. That's what's out there today. I have some site photos that show, top left, that's the approach from Marketplace Drive up to our site. And then you can see in the other photos, existing parking and road surfaces and a vegetated berm that separates our site from the interstate corridor. Our existing condition survey shows the property line highlighted in yellow. Also visible is a driveway access agreement benefiting our parcel. The property can either be accessed directly from Marketplace Drive or across that easement on the adjacent property. We did have a geotechnical report done and what it, the, what we are finding there is fill soils ranging in depth from four to nine feet. Those soils are gonna have to be excavated and recompacted in order to be made suitable for our building and parking improvements. So the majority of the improvements that are out there are, that will all be demolished and opened up and recompacted. Here you can see our site plan that shows the building placement and the parking layout and the position of the trash enclosure. We have preferred parking for carpool, bike racks, as is specified in our traffic demand management plan. As part of the PUD waiver process, we're requesting a waiver from the 35-foot setback on the 494 side. We are proposing instead a reduced 20-foot setback along that frontage. We've been working actively with the watershed district to develop our stormwater plan and making comparison of the existing site to what is being proposed. We're reducing impervious area by about 9,000 square feet currently. And I'll, I think I'll go back to the existing conditions plan. You know, this paved, you know, the parking lot that exists today is about 9,000 square feet, more impervious area than we are proposing. So, and as it exists today, all of the stormwater is essentially untreated. It flows into catch basins and into the storm sewer. As we are proposing it, all of that stormwater would be captured and treated before being discharged into the storm sewers. So we have our stormwater pond in the southwest corner of the site. And then we are taking what feels like two extraordinary measures to treat stormwater. One is in the far northwest corner of the site. We're actually building a, I think my pointer won't hit over there. Far northwest, northeast corner of the site, we are taking all of the stormwater coming down that existing Marketplace Drive access, putting it in a catch basin and treating it with an underground storage system. And then along the existing parking stalls on the north edge of the site, we are cutting in about 150 feet of trench drain to take, capture stormwater off of those existing parking stalls. So I think the, you know, the, from the existing to the proposed is a, is a great improvement in stormwater quality management. 93% of total suspended solids being treated and 83% of phosphorus being treated. So these are, these are high numbers and we've worked with the watershed to make this right. And I'm happy to be able to present that to you today. Our utility plan shows a water service being looped through the property and a sanitary connection to the existing sewer at Marketplace Drive. Our second request for waiver tonight is an increase in the amount of Class II materials allowed on the building. We are proposing a combination of natural stone, architectural concrete, masonry with cast stone accents, architectural glazing and aluminum frames, and anodized aluminum metal cladding of two different types, two different profiles. By ordinance, the amount of metal cladding, the Class II material is limited to 25%. And on a per façade basis, we are requesting an increase to 29% to 35% per façade. And these are the, these are the relevant points, as I understood them. Happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Initial questions for the proponent. Sure. Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. Site plan, can you go back to the site plan if you wouldn't mind for a moment?
Sure, we will, yeah.
Of course, you have that shared driveway access easement along the north side there with parking directly off of it. There was some chatter in the staff report in your letter talking about that. Doesn't sound like anybody's using that a lot right now. So you're calling that your own, it's on your property, right?
That's correct, yes. And we've, it has been a conversation, we've researched the title information. Our surveyor has helped us with that. And the, those parking stalls are on our property. The access easement benefits us, it allows us to access our parking stalls.
Sure, sure.
The photos that I shared, if I would go back there, at least on this particular day, they are not being used by the, other than the one yellow car in the corner, those stalls are not being used by the adjacent property, as we understand it.
Sure, okay. So it's your, it's your position that you're going to own the stalls, use the stalls, and not have others use the stalls?
Our position is that we probably don't need those stalls in order to occupy our building. You know, we, our employees will park on our site. We're not gonna probably be parking over there. But our, our understanding of it is that those are our stalls. You know, they help us meet our parking requirement for the site.
Okay, all right. So there's one accessible parking stall that's there?
Yes.
That you're keeping there? And there's a set of steps between that accessible parking stall and your front door that preclude the wheelchair from getting to the front door?
Yeah. We were asked by city staff to add the sidewalk and the steps to allow people parking in that area to use to enter the building. You know, we, that, we were, we did not put that there by our choice. We put that there in response to a request from the city. We do have two accessible parking stalls in front of our building, which is more than enough for a building of our size.
Sure, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the legal issue of putting an accessible stall in an inaccessible route.
Well, that accessible parking stall is there now. We're not planning to create it. It happens to exist in the sidewalk and the steps is not something we elected to do, it's something we were asked to do. It's something that was a concession, I suppose, that we made as part of this review process.
Okay. Well, I don't want to make too big deal out of it, but it just seems that since you're absorbing it on your property and it's for your use, as opposed to the neighbor to the north, I could see how that could be on an accessible route for somebody else. But now it's yours and it doesn't serve your property, you can't get there. So it's just an odd thing that I just wanted to ask more questions about. So I don't want to make it a deal breaker, we can move on. But that was my point. Thank you.
No further questions. Commissioner De Sanctus?
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Ready? Will the architectural materials that you are describing to us be 360 degrees? In other words, will people coming down the freeway, looking to the right or coming off the cloverleaf to Highway 212, they will see the rear of the building, I assume, the southwest angle? Will then the architectural materials be uniform 360 degrees all the way around the building?
They will be, yes, yeah. And I'm sorry, my slideshow doesn't address that, but I think the drawings that we submitted to the city do.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Other questions? Commissioner Mehdi.
Is this building planned to be multi-tenant building or is your company occupying the whole thing?
That's a great question. It is company occupied only. And the way I would describe that structure, Anderson Group is a holding company. Both of the companies that plan to occupy the building are wholly owned subsidiaries of Anderson Group. And that includes Norson Construction. The company that I work for, it includes Norson Custom Builders, you know, another wholly owned subsidiary. There is an unimproved tenants' base on the first level that is either going to be utilized as growth of one or the other of our companies or possibly an acquisition by Anderson Group. But again, the intent is that it would be occupied entirely by Anderson Group companies.
Okay. One of my questions, which has been somewhat answered here, was going to be, you know, how many employees do you plan to park there? Because in my head, looking at this, it seemed like it had more stalls than needed. But now I kind of understand that, and I was gonna suggest maybe don't build them all and just provide parking, but those extra stalls are already built. So it's not like you're, you know, going beyond to build more stalls than you need. So it seems appropriate to me.
I appreciate that comment. And if you read the traffic demand management plan closely, the traffic engineer is suggesting that the amount required by ordinance is not nearly what would be, or is quite a bit more than what would be required for our occupancy. That being said, the 30 or so that are on the parcel to the north, we do not expect to be actively using those. So we'll, we like to have the number of stalls we have closer to the building to service our staff and our customers, our guests.
And I think in my experience, and city codes don't really address this most of the time, smaller office buildings like this one don't have the parking stall count demand per square foot that a much larger building was. Because when you get to larger buildings, you have more, larger floor plans where you have cubicle farms and, or, you know, call center kind of things. And you don't see that in buildings the size, so. But it makes sense because they're there, you're gonna use them. Okay, one other comment slash question was, the trash enclosure, to me, seemed largely oversized for an office building of this size, but all, and the use. I've built some before that are smaller than this, that serve restaurants. And it seemed like that might be, I don't know if you consulted with a trash provider or not, and they might be, you know, guiding you to oversize it. But it seemed like that structure was larger than necessary. I noticed it also had a roof, so it's just, you know, it almost looks like the secondary huge building. And it's, to me, you know, I think it'd be preferred if it works for your trash needs to minimize that. So it's not sort of this, you know, elephant sitting out there.
Right. Those are both great comments. You know, with respect to the trash enclosure, one of the things that drives it is the state has a requirement to handle not just the trash, but recycling. So we have, we have a trash container and a recycling container. It's a, you know, I guess what I would say is this is what we typically do for commercial developments of this size and type. It's partly driven by the state, that, you know, the need for recycling. Could those be rolling totes, more of a residential tote?
Yeah.
That's a possibility, but what, you know, the, the, the kind of the other variable is the frequency with which they are emptied. As far as the roof, I think that comes right out of the ordinance. I've never put a roof on a trash enclosure before, but the city of Eden Prairie does require that.
If that was a requirement, seemed a little much, but yeah. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Taylor.
Thank you, Ms. De Sanctus. Oh, how you doing, De Sanctus?
Hi, thank you.
You, you're requesting a waiver on a frontage side facing Highway 212 from 35 feet to 20, that'd be 25, 28 feet. What does that gain, gain you by that, asking for the waiver?
That's a great question, you know. And I think the place that I would start is that, that, you know, if you, if you think about the purpose of having a front setback, you know, is that purpose really fulfilled on a side of the property that is hundreds of feet out to an interstate highway? And I think I would debate, or I would look at the definition of front setback that's in the ordinance and ask whether or not that really is a front setback. What does it gain us? It allows us to put an office building of this size and a double-loaded parking area on what is, you know, we, on a fairly narrow lot. We don't have a lot of room there, the lot is narrow. So we want to be able to get the build, you know, have our double-loaded parking, have our building, have our green space. There is a berm out to the interstate, which I think is a mitigating factor. And then this question of whether or not an interstate really is a front, you know, based on the distance from the property line out to the roadway, is a question. And I think if you look at an aerial photo, you see that lots of other buildings along the interstate are closer than our building will be just by virtue of the way the plaats were, the way the property lines were described.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you.
Julie, will you take us through the staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, request before you this evening, as Mr. Hopkins stated, is a guide plan amendment from regional commercial to office on the property, as well as PUD concept review and PUD district review with waivers and a site plan review. So as Mr. Hopkins overviewed in his presentation, there are two waiver requests. One is the front yard setback that Commissioner Taylor was just asking about a few moments ago. So by definition, in the city code, front yard is any frontage that is directly adjacent to street right-of-way. So because 494 or 212 right-of-way is adjacent to this property, that lot line counts as a front yard just as much as the small bit of frontage that exists on Marketplace Drive. So by code, a front yard setback would be required on that freeway frontage. Now, it's 285 feet from the off-ramp to the property line in question, and there's approximately 50 feet of grade difference between those two points. The other waiver request that's being asked for this evening is with regard to building materials. So as you're all well aware, city code requires 75% of each facade, rather, to have Class I materials. 25% of each facade can have Class II. Metal is classified as a Class II building material. Now, five years ago or so, when the city council was revisiting, along with the planning commission revisiting, the design standards and the Class I, Class II materials, metal is one of those materials that got a lot of discussion. I see Commissioner Farr nodding his head. There was a lot of debate about whether or not metal should be a Class I material. At that time, the council was fairly open to the idea, but the direction was essentially that they weren't at that point very comfortable making it a Class I material by right, meaning that an entire building could come in or the majority of the building could include metal as a facade material. Rather, they preferred the option of leaving it as a Class II so that in instances like this, where there was a little bit of an overage of that metal material, that it would allow the city the opportunity to review that and weigh in on how that metal was being used. So the applicant this evening is asking for a waiver to increase the Class II materials from 25% to 29% on one facade and up to as much as 35% on one, I think one or maybe two of the facades. But on average, it's in that 29% to 35% rather than the 25% required by code. Staff is recommending approval of the project, including the waivers that are requested, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Julie. Questions for the city? Commissioner Mehdi.
You answered my question on the metal, you read my mind. But as a reminder, fiber cement is considered Class I, but metals, class, okay?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, fiber cement is a Class I only in the multifamily residential districts.
Okay, okay. That's still odd to me, but not off-subject, but thank you. Other question then, with regards to this parking row on the northern end of the property that clearly has, you know, apparently be being used by the property to the north. Does that put that other property out of compliance? I'm just kind of curious if those stalls were ever counted in that other property's development or how they all came out, came to be, and so, just curious about that.
Commissioner Mehdi, Chair, members of the commission, so there is not a shared parking agreement to account for those parking stalls? And in staff's research, those parking stalls are not counted towards any other property's parking requirement. They do, as Mr. Hopkins mentioned, help this site meet its parking requirement and being counted towards theirs because it is on their property. But they do not appear to have been included in any other development projects, parking needs. It appears they were constructed as overflow parking at some point in time.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this project, please do so now. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. Commissioner Farr, move to close the public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gooding with a second. All those in favor of closing public hearing, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Public hearing is closed. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Farr.
So, thank you, Julie, for bringing up the whole metal issue again. And maybe for those of you who haven't heard me opine on this before, I just want to take a moment to reflect my architectural opinion on the metal discussion within the city policy and how that may affect this project. Architectural metals, a lot of architects use the phrase "architectural metals", as did this applicant, as though they were all the same and they're not. Metal can be used in different ways. And the differentiating factor that I would like the city to consider in future code improvements would be the use of light gauge steel, light gauge sheet steel, basically, which we all use as trim work around roof copings and things like that, versus a more dimensionally stable and more durable material. They have composite materials where metal goes on a backing material, metal composite. It's called MCM or ACM aluminum composite material. And there are plate aluminum, plate steel, so that they won't deform. Oil can is the phrase that you've probably been used to when things deform because of the sun, changes in temperature, thermal expansion and contraction. We try and control that as architects, try and make the buildings dimensionally stable, flat, good-looking. And that would fall into the classification, in my own personal opinion, as architectural metals. And that probably should become a Class I material in our city. It's not. So, and I noticed that in this particular job, they're using conventional light gauge sheet metal. They're calling it architectural metal. And that's what they're asking for, the variance of metal in general. But it's not architectural metal, in my, my own view. So my position on this particular project is to say, if you're asking for a variance on a Class I material, I would at least want you to use an architectural metal, ACM, MCM, or solid sheet steel to avoid the oil canning and to improve durability, as opposed to light gauge sheet metal, which should fall under that low percentage of building materials used as trim, especially in thin little bands up at the top of the roof where it's not noticeable. So, sorry for that long explanation, but that would be my opinion and where I would stand on the approval of this project, just in terms of the use of metal, especially because they're asking for variance. And we can talk further in future meetings about the city's policy on that and whether or not we change our zoning ordinance to match that description or something similar. My only other opinion, architecturally, by the way, I don't mind the comprehensive guide plan change or the setback variance. I think there's plenty of dimension, Highway 212, and that's just fine. I think the building site plan works very well. The use of exterior materials, the stone selections on the outside of the building, to the architect, as you know, a field stone just historically has been used as the base, kind of a foundation of the building in broader senses. You're also using on these very skinny piers around the building. And I would have expected something more tailored there, like a brick look or stone with joints that are regular and routine, as opposed to the field stone, which is, it looks a little odd being a little bit narrow. Maybe that appeals to your home builder side of the business. And so I don't want to, I don't want to play architect for you. It's an observation that you can just take under some consideration. Okay? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Farr? Commissioner Mehdi?
That's a good point you bring up, Commissioner Farr, on the metal. I didn't catch that difference. So they don't have architectural metal, they're using more of a sheet metal?
That's correct. One of the fabricated products that a local manufacturer's make and then just regular bent sheet metal from the sheet metal shop. And some of the, some of the bands are, you know, 18 inches high. And so they'll wander. They have standard lap joints, just like a sheet metal job. So it's not, it's not a detailed joint. It's a slip joint.
Okay, that's helpful. And I'm just trying to go through my head other properties I've seen and struggling with, you know. The difference is I, this is the first time I'm like really realizing that difference. The difference is, this is the first time I'm like really realizing that difference, but I think maybe what I've seen sometimes in sheet metal is just where it's more of the smaller pieces that are sort of overlapped, and that's where, the only way you can use it to prevent what you're, you know, the oil canning and whatnot, but it seems like this application's certainly too large for that thinner metal product, and it should be something more substantial.
If that's a question back...
Kind of question slash...
I would say generally, yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, hats off to the architect for actually selecting a corrugated profile, because that corrugated profile helps to stiffen it. He didn't use that profile throughout the application. The very top of the building, there's, I'm going to say, 18 inches plus or minus. Mr. Hopkins can correct me if I'm wrong. And then below that, another five or six feet, there's another 12 to 18-inch band of just flat sheet metal. And so that's the stuff that's more subject to oil canning than the corrugated profile. But as a broadscape comment, light gauge sheet metal for 30% of the building, in my mind, isn't worth the variance.
Are you suggesting, then, I don't want to put words in your mouth, that maybe we would add as a condition of approval that we specify the metal waiver be architectural metal? Or, you know, again, I don't want to put words in your mouth, what are you proposing here?
Yes, is the answer to your question. Yes, I would, if I have the luxury of adding a recommendation for approval to this project, I would put a stipulation that the applicant put at least enough material using ACM or MCM, would be the industry standard language, or a more stable, durable material, steel of metal, in lieu of the light gauge sheet metal solution, to, as a minimum, bring that into compliance with code to avoid the, well, it was to be a waiver because it's metal. We haven't changed our ordinance yet, but at least to the 75% level.
I would agree with that statement. I think it's one of those things, and maybe for others here too, that it's outside of our knowledge on the specific materials and whatnot here. So if, I'm on board with that, if that's something that you are proposing.
Appreciate your support. Mr. Hopkins, would you like to speak to this?
I think I would, and maybe just a point of clarification, if I could go back to my slides. And I will go to the exteriors, the... You are an architect, Mr. Farr?
I am. I play one during the day.
Okay. This is fantastic, and I appreciate your comments. And I did not have a chance earlier to say that, as an architect, I appreciate that a city, that the city of Eden Prairie has crafted this architectural standards in the way they have, because it's a really important tool that architects have to communicate with clients over creating good buildings. So I want to thank the city for the language that they've put in place as a tool for architects to use to get good buildings. This is a good building. And I think with respect to the comment of light gauge versus things that are not subject to oil canning or deformation, most of the metal that's on this building, because it is a profile, and I think my, I'll try to use my laser, I don't think it's hitting the screen very well. Yeah, it's disappearing on the screen, but I'm going to point it. Everything between the windows and everything from the top of the window, all the way up to that last 18 inches, is metal profile material that is not going to be subject to oil canning or deformation. You know, that last 18 inches, that... That last 18 inches, that cornice, is made out of flat metal, and that is a concern, and I appreciate your attention to it. But if we were to do a kind of percentage takeoff, we'd find that that last bit, that last 18 inches, is far under the 25% that the ordinance speaks to. Most of the metal on the building is formed in a way that is not going to be subject to oil canning or deformation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to kind of weigh in on this issue, I look at this in a couple of different ways. One is particularly since our proponent is designing a building for their own organization, and their organization is architects and constructors and builders, it seems to me that they're going to be very, very careful about the appearance of that building and what it looks like. And the magnitude of the waiver that we're talking about here is, again, in my opinion, relatively small. So I don't see this as an issue. And just as a tongue-in-cheek comment, I'm educated as a metallurgist, so I kind of like to see a little bit, you know, of a high-quality metal finish used on a building. So I'm not in complete agreement with my colleagues on this one. I think the waiver is acceptable and that actually it will do their own organization more damage to have a poorly designed, poorly implemented metal structure than the city's regulations could influence them on. So I'm okay with it.
Commissioner Gooding?
So I'm going to agree with Mr. Commissioner Kirk. Given the amount of the variance they're looking for, if they stayed within the boundaries of the ordinance, we would have no say in the metal that's up there. The little bit of variance that they're looking for, I struggle with the commission stipulating a different design. Commissioner Kirk wisely pointed out, it's their own building. They're going to occupy it. I would expect them to build it to a, really, a good standard. I normally really listen to my buddy here, Commissioner Farr. I respect his opinion, but I think for the little bit of variance they're looking for, I think it's a step too far for the commission to take to try to stipulate a material they're going to use in their building.
Anyone else like to... Commissioner Mehdi?
A follow-up. It's always helpful to get, again, everybody's reaction. So now that, I think Commissioner Kirk made some good points, and I'm now starting to lean towards, and we've done this before, we occasionally provide comments and suggestions to them, and in this case, maybe this is just one where it's appropriate to provide the suggestion that they, you know, try to take a look at the design and ensure to avoid oil canning, but not necessarily make that a specific condition here, given the points brought up about how, you know, the percentage of that, that is of a concern is, again, if they didn't trigger beyond 35%, they could have done this, and we wouldn't have said anything. So, again, I kind of can go both ways on this. I'm a little bit in the middle, but I don't think I would deny it over this.
Other comments, discussion? Hey, it's good discussion. I was satisfied with Mr. Hopkins' answer personally, and I like what Commissioner Kirk said. I think they're building it for themselves, so. If there's no other comments or questions, entertaining motion. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion, and just for the record, I too don't want this project to go down in flames just because of this metal discussion. I just wanted to have a healthy dialogue of that, and I too appreciate my colleagues' opinions on that matter very much as a good discussion.
Just to quickly add to that, I think the discussion is important.
Yeah.
And airing the different perspectives on it is educational and important for us. So it's good that we have the ability to do that on this panel.
Absolutely, and I trust that the city will be, you know, in future reviews of our zoning code for exterior materials, the subject will come up and have, they'll have their own spirited discussion, and to the extent we want to, you know, add more color commentary on it, it'd be great. That said, I would like to go on record and make a motion with my suggestion, and if the fellow commissioners feel inclined to say no to that motion, then we can approve the project through another motion. But I would just appreciate your attention to my motion.
And may I have the motion?
Yes, sure. Yes, yes, okay, thank you. So I'm going to recommend the project for approval for guide plan change from regional commercial to office on 1.66 acres, planned unit development concept review on 1.66 acres, planned unit district review with waivers on 1.66 acres, and site plan review on 1.66 acres, based on plan stamped dated December 7, 2021, and the staff report dated December 13, 2021, with the following condition, that the percentage of metal on the facade be brought to within the 25% limit with the use of light gauge sheet metal materials, and any additional metal used on the building be a more dimensionally stable metal material such as MCM or ACM.
Okay, I have a motion. Commissioner Farr, do I have a second on that motion? All right, I don't have a second. Does someone want to make another motion?
Can I ask the city a quick question?
Of course.
Do we split metals now? Do we split different types of metals within code?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, no, the code does not differentiate between types of metals at this point. All metal is classified as a Class II material.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Kirk?
Move to recommend approval for a guide plan change from regional commercial to office on 1.66 acres, planned unit development concept review on 1.66 acres, planned unit district review with waivers on 1.66 acres, and a site plan review on 1.66 acres, based on plan stamped dated December 7, 2021, and a staff report dated December 13, 2021.
All right, I have a motion. Another motion from Commissioner Kirk. Do I have a second on this motion?
I will second that motion.
Second from Commissioner Sanctus. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Passes. Good luck moving on to the next step with your project. Thank you for your time this evening. All right, we have one more public hearing this evening, code amendment for signage. This is a request to amend city code, Chapter 11, relating to content neutrality and housekeeping revisions and signing regulations. Julie, would you take us through this?
Just a minute. I do have a slideshow, or excuse me, a PowerPoint that I would like to share with you as a part of this sign code amendment. The objective of the sign code update is not to establish a new sign ordinance, but rather to revise the existing code. And the existing sign ordinance has not had a comprehensive update in quite some time. The code has been in place since 1969 or thereabouts, and it's had a few fixes along the way, but not at any point has it had a complete relook, if you will. So the city staff has brought forward several different objectives that need to be met as part of a sign code update. The first one is to address a federal ruling that the United States Supreme Court issued in, I believe it was 2015, with regard to Reed versus the town of Gilbert in Arizona. And as a part of that case, the Supreme Court said that signage cannot be regulated by its content. And so as a part of that, many cities are going through the exercise of removing all content references in their sign code to make it content neutral. So that was one of the objectives that we wanted to achieve in taking a look at our sign code. The second objective is to create some sign code regulations that are specific to some newly created zoning districts. For instance, the Town Center District and the TOD districts have been created. There's a couple more on our books that we need to take a look at in order to implement Aspire 2040. So we want to, as we go along the way, update the sign code at the same time. And then also looking at organizing and reformatting the ordinance itself. So as you can imagine, an ordinance written in 1969, the style maybe was a bit different than what we're used to today. So there's a need to move some of those pieces of information around to locations that are more intuitive to our users. And then also just necessary housekeeping updates that reflect changes in terminology or consistency in application, now that, of course, we've been using the sign code for several decades. You know, we have learned how it could possibly be improved to increase usability and user friendliness. So as a part of all of those objectives, our work plan does include updates to the city code. So in March 2021, staff went to one of the city council's workshops and shared all of those objectives with the council. And what we shared with the council at that point was, rather than trying to take all of those pieces at one time and have a very, for lack of a better word, cumbersome amendment come forward, we wanted to break those down into smaller pieces in order to not have the whole project get delayed because it was just frankly too big. So what we talked about with the council at that point was to sequence some of those objectives, and what we prioritized at that time with the council's direction was to come back with the content neutrality piece first and foremost, in order to become more compliant with the federal ruling that the Supreme Court provided. So this evening, what you have before you is code amendments that propose content neutrality as well as some housekeeping amendments. As we went through the code with our city attorney, there was some terminologies that she proposed be included, and we did some reformatting as well, in some cases, in order to just improve the usability of the overall ordinance and make it friendly not only to staff, but to sign companies, to property owners, to all of those folks who use it on a daily basis. So some of the examples, because I don't want to go through, or, I mean, I will, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but I don't intend to go through each and every example that is redlined in the document before you this evening. So we wanted to give you a flavor of what are some of the general content neutral changes that are proposed as part of the amendment. So on this slide, you'll see three examples. The first one is the definition of institutional sign would be removed, because of course, as you read that definition, it is very clear that you have to read a sign to know if it's an institutional one. So of course, that's content-based. By removing the definition of institutional sign doesn't mean that an institutional use can no longer have a sign. They certainly can, but the sign would be regulated based on the underlying zoning district and regulated with regard to height, size, location, those types of things. Second example is that religious symbols, meaning pictures, designs, sculptures, or other objects that suggest religious faith, ideas, or qualities, of course, that's very clearly content-based, and that would be eliminated as well. The last example is the definition of a planned unit development area identification sign for commercial properties. Again, content-based. A PUD development would still be allowed to have the same size, same location of sign. It just not, would not be referred to as this type of sign. It would be regulated as a freestanding sign. So those are the examples of content neutrality. Some of the examples of the housekeeping amendments are ones that you see here, changing the word "shall" to "must" in some instances, as well as just rewording a definition or provision in order to make it read a little easier than maybe it did in the past. And I think that's certainly the same with the third bullet point example. As you can see, all of the red that's proposed to be struck out has been reworded by adding, I think, four words that will make it just read a whole lot easier for our users. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, if you have some specific items that you reviewed in part of your review. But that is the overall essence of this amendment, removing all the content neutral, or removing all the content-based to make it content neutral, and then just housekeeping measures to improve the usability of the code.
Thank you, Julie. Questions for the city of MS? Commissioner Markel?
Yeah, just a quick question, Julie, on that... Yeah, just a quick question, Julie. Like on that last one, you added, or they added an immediate, like fixing a broken sign, they added immediate. Is there a definition of immediate for people? Because I like that it seems like the housekeeping really made it concise and clear of, you know, it's not just, we expect this, this is what we do, you know, we do expect it. It was very confirming in that, but making sure there's not continued unknowns, or, you know, that people can kind of just get away with things. Is there a definition?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, immediate is not a defined term in the ordinance. In the instances where a term is used in the ordinance and it's not defined, because of course, I mean, our ordinance would be as big as Webster Dictionary, we do refer to the Webster Dictionary, so that's what we would do if somebody were saying, were coming back to us and saying, well, it hasn't been that long, I don't need to fix it. We would, at a staff level, work with code enforcement to look at how is immediate defined in everyday terms, if you will.
Is there a reason not to put any kind of timelines on some of those? That just is one in particular, maybe that's sticking out, but just timelines?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the intention behind having immediate is to make sure that these things get corrected as quickly as possible. Certainly, if we become aware of it at staff level, or the city receives a complaint, and our code enforcement personnel go out and investigate it, we will certainly work with a property owner. Of course, you know, for instance, right now, supply chain issues are a big deal. So we, maybe immediate isn't possible, but we would work with them to set a reasonable timeframe to make sure that compliance is achieved, because that is the overall goal, just as much as the timing is important.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Commissioner Farr?
Mr. Chair, Julie, can I ask a question about the dynamic displays? I remember when we were looking at the Burger King project, that might have been eight months ago or so, at the corner of four and five, and this topic actually came up accidentally, maybe, when we were looking at the drive-through and they had the menu boards. And so we all know that when we drive through the restaurant there, the menu boards, their display changes dynamically about every three to five seconds, so that you can read about the chicken offerings versus the beef offerings versus the salads, right? And so I'm reading something about the dynamic display not changing more often than once every 20 minutes, almost the last page of this. And I don't know if we need to differentiate between those types of signs that are maybe directed off-site versus menu boards. Again, that's content, so I don't want to go down that slippery slope. But is there a differentiation required there?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Farr, menu boards are actually a, are regulated differently in the proposed ordinance, because as you said, they are intended to be viewed from the internal portion of the site. So menu boards are regulated in a different section of the ordinance and would not fall under the dynamic display.
They wouldn't?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Because in that particular job, they faced Highway 5, and I wondered if they could be misused by at night when there's no longer drive-through traffic, them projecting advertising at a larger scale on those same monitors to advertise.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in the instance, if that were to happen, I've not seen that happen, I don't know if you have in other communities, but I've not, then certainly there would be the opportunity for city staff to follow up on that, and we would have the code written in such a way that it would support staff's position and the concern that you've addressed.
Sure, okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Mitty?
I'm going to be a little facetious here, Julie, and ask that, how do you know it's a menu board if you don't read the content of the sign?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, you know it's a menu board by its location.
Okay, thank you.
Lot of time on that one.
All right, other comments or questions?
This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this amendment, please do so now. I'm seeing none. I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Motion from Commissioner Higgins to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Marcos. All right, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's closed. Any further discussion about this request? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
To recommend approval for code amendments relating to the sign code based on recommendations from the staff report dated December 19, 2021.
All right, I have a motion, Commissioner De Sintis, for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Mitty. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, your amendment carries. Thanks, Julie. All right, I think we have a planners' report this evening.
Yes, sir. The commission is asked to approve the 2022 Planning Commission work plan. As you know, as commissioners, the majority of your work is generated out of development applications that are filed with the city over the course of the year. As a part of the work plan, we also like to refamiliarize the commission with the roles and responsibilities, charter statement, in that type of background information that is shared with the commission. But we also like to share some goals or ideas for other work items that might be carried forward in the event that development were to not be as busy as one would anticipate. So you'll see that in 2022, we've included not only code amendments similar to the sign that we just discussed, but also code amendments that would address implementation of the comprehensive plan. We've talked about presenting the training curriculum in the second quarter for new or recurring commissioners, as well as talking about, excuse me, electronic plan review implementation. I talked with some of you prior to the meeting that as of today, our electronic plan review process went live, so we will have electronic plans moving forward from this evening. And then also in the fourth quarter, taking a look and talking about what your 2023 work plan would look like. Also included on the table this evening for your review is the 2022 Planning Commission meeting dates that are typically scheduled for the second and fourth Mondays of the month, with very few exceptions towards the end of the year. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the work plan, but otherwise, we would ask the Planning Commission to approve the work plan and meeting dates.
Thank you, Julie. I guess I had a question for Commissioner Farr. Is there somewhere in the work plan where you'd like to have a discussion about metal, in the Class II, and digging into that?
Not necessarily off-schedule from staff's ordinary review of that section of the ordinance. I trust that that may just be coming up for review in a matter of course, and I don't need to advance it any faster than staff would ordinarily advance a topic like that. Thank you for asking, I appreciate that.
Other questions or comments about the work plan and the meeting schedule?
Julie, I have a question. We spent a lot of time tonight talking about metallurgy. What I'm wondering about, too, is it would be helpful to me to get more information about how the city is complying with new environmental regulations, sustainability efforts. Again, I was aware tonight that we didn't really get into the weeds of that with this project, but I'm wondering if there might be an educational piece related to implementation of green codes, sustainability codes, and ecosystem-based regulations for any commercial project or residential project.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that's certainly something that staff can discuss more internally with, we do have a sustainability coordinator on staff, who I know she is spending a fair amount of her time taking a look at not only what Eden Prairie can and is doing, but what other communities are doing as well. So I would anticipate that is something that would be moving forward. You know, I can't give you an exact date, but moving forward certainly in the near future.
Thank you.
Can I add on to that, Commissioner De Sintas? When an application comes in, isn't there a little checklist that you ask the applicant to address? I think an example would be tonight's, where they go point by point, how are we affecting this part of the city code, how are we affecting that? I believe sustainability is on at least one of those checklist items, so they have to address it. Is that right, Julie?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that is correct. We have what we call a development review handbook that not only outlines meeting dates for the Planning Commission and Council, but also all of their submittal requirements that applicants need to provide. As a part of that, that's been updated now for January 1. We have included a sustainability section as a part of that, so it provides a menu of options, if you will, that we are encouraging all developers or applicants to take a look at. Maybe not all of those features make sense on a particular site, but looking at which ones do and how they could best implement them as part of their project.
Good. Well, I support your motivations there, Commissioner De Sintas, and splitting out specifically what is mandated by law, what is emerging technology, and what is technology that's easily adaptive, and coming to some kind of a balance there, so that we can provide appropriate feedback to the applicants.
Yeah, and my wish, too, would be that there's less siloing of the commissions. So I would welcome an opportunity for the Sustainability Commission to have an integrated meeting with us, to have a dialogue about sustainability efforts for this city.
I'd just like to go on record and say I second all of those comments and feel strongly about it as well. Any other comments, suggestions? All right, entertain.
I'll just say one item, just along lines, and I hadn't thought of it before, but there is a mention here about the Heritage Preservation Commission, and I don't know that anything in their immediate, I'm on board right now for them, is in that vein, discussed about bringing them in and asking for ideas, but it's probably going to be the other way around. But I think it might actually be something to bring to their attention, at least. I don't know how staff would do that, but just maybe on a staff level, so that they're aware that we're going to be looking at that going forward, in case there is some kind of connection and communication that would be helpful. I have no idea what they're doing.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. I would entertain a motion to approve the work plan and meeting schedule with commentary noted.
So moved.
All right, motion from Commissioner Mitty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Kirk. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, our work plan is set for next year, and our meeting schedule, so. All right, moving on this evening, I think it's just any members' reports. Good? All right, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.